If everybody please stand, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Beautiful night outside, well it was kind of clouded up I guess a little when I came in, but as we go through both of our agendas tonight, please remember our mission and our vision statement, and we want to rise to all the occasions, so please remember that. We'll get started tonight before we, the agenda will open with the budget amendment hearing, which it is seven o'clock we'll say, we'll start the budget amendment hearing.
Yep, we have a public hearing to amend the FY twenty-three budget. This is a typical practice in the May of the current budget year. We will be proposing increasing instruction, one point one million dollars to reflect increased salary costs from our estimate last April. So you know, last April, last month, when we certified the budget for FY twenty-four, you know, we put estimates in, and that's really all they are, they're estimates, and when you get to actual, that we're in this year for FY twenty-three, we need to amend that if we, if we're going to spend over what those estimates were from the year before. We'd also increase total support services by five hundred thousand to accommodate additional expenses that were paid via ESAR. You know, we have ESAR dollars that are being used on labor, and that would reflect that, and then non-instructional programs, two hundred and fifty thousand. So this is what the, those amendments look like, which we'll approve later on in the meeting.
So total of one point eight five?
Yep, one point eight five is the total.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing done, we'll then close the budget amendment hearing here at seven oh two, and we'll move into our regular meeting agenda of the Algonquin Community School Districts. We'd need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thanks Brent, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Todd, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. We do not have any hearing delegations, but we do have a communications to the board.
Coach Chad Slagel and the baseball team asked this morning if myself and the board would be willing to throw out the first pitch at their home opener next Tuesday, May sixteenth, to recognize the improvements on the high school baseball field for this year.
Everybody's got good arms?
Anyone's interested in coming out to do that, I think that would be great. The varsity game is about seven thirty usually, so being there by seven would get you time to go out and celebrate the improvements to the field.
Are they all done or near completion or?
Lights are done, backstop is done, siding to all the buildings is done, so those are the immediate ones that we got done for this year. Close to a half million dollars in improvements for this year.
Well, please put that in your calendar, and who all can make it, that'd be greatly appreciated, it's a nice honor by the baseball team.
Yeah, it is.
Coach Chad, Coach Slagel asks us, and again, it's next Tuesday, May sixteenth.
I'll put that in the memo on Friday.
Yeah.
And I'll send a reminder.
Maybe, yeah, morning of reminder.
Morning or afternoon or something.
All right, okay.
I'll be at the hospital, so it'll be a far.
Perfect. All right, consent items, we need to, I'm sure we've all received them in your board packets on Friday, and I hope you've had a chance to look them over. There was some additional invoices that were put here, so if you haven't had a chance to look at them.
You know, little revenue and expenses, you know, we continue to operate with, you know, with the surplus. Our revenues to date are about one point six million over our expenses. That does always even out as we end the year, and we pay teachers' salaries, you know, for three months at the end, so that will close. You know, we're anticipating to be, you know, about a break-even year, that's what we've been forecasting all year, but we are operating in a surplus right now, which is a good sign for how we'll end FY twenty-three.
Any questions on the consent items? Hearing done then, just need a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Thanks Jay, do we have a second? All right Brent, we have a motion and a second, any further comments or questions? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent items approved. Superintendent's report.
You know, first of all, congratulations and thank you to everyone, as this is school board appreciation month, and we, there's some certificates that are provided by the Iowa Association of School Board and the district, thanking you for your service and dedication. Last day of school.
I'll remind everybody watching, this is not a paid position. People have to do another thing that's paid.
Also want to thank who's watching, the elementary schools provided us with some pizza tonight before the meeting, so we want to thank them for that, and appreciate their remembering and bringing us some good food tonight.
Last day of school for students and staff, well, students, is May twenty-sixth at eleven thirty. We'll celebrate our staff who is retiring, which we've run to Hesh, Kim Knudsen, and Don Gatten, at our two PM celebration in the High School Commons. We'll also recognize our staff with twenty-five years of service with the Golden Apple Award, and we'll also have our class of nineteen seventy-nine Teacher of the Year will be presented. Board members are certainly welcome to attend. Last day of staff, that is the next Tuesday after Memorial Day. We are again planning a new teacher day on June sixteenth. This is something we started last year to improve our processes for onboarding our new staff to the district. A way for us to support our new teachers, you know, before they get here in August, and we have two days with just new staff, and it's really busy and kind of overwhelming, and anything we can do to slow that down for them, I think is beneficial. So we bring them in just a morning in June, and we get them their computer and their keys and their email login and their infinite campus login, just some small things that we think are really beneficial. And the feedback we got from that is really good, so we'll plan that again for June sixteenth. They hear from Mrs. Zeichen, they hear from Jeff Gish, they hear from our technology department, and we have lunch together. So it's something that we think has been good. We have typically this time of the year started to talk about our board retreat. It's something we've had the last three years actually, and we've included administrators in that. I think that's been valuable in our planning process for upcoming years. I think it would be good again to have that, you know, some possible topics. Last year, we talked about philosophically, school schedules, you know, like a four-day student week, what that would look like in our district. We could continue that type of discussion, just to learn more, more than anything. We could also look at a future early retirement program, something we put in place for a few years, you know, four years back. That might be something to consider moving ahead to balance our budget again. And then future facility planning, which we've done a lot of work with facilities this year, specifically in the last two months, looking at our current facilities, needs that we'll have in the future. We have some things we're moving ahead with, with the fieldhouse, but you know, just looking at that planning that we're in with the fieldhouse as well as some future planning, those are just some possible retreat topics that we could include. Some possible dates is what we need to probably explore, and I don't think we need to throw those dates out tonight, but it'd probably be part of a memo that we'll send out here of what, if we could find something in June, which is always a challenge, but I think it's valuable. Administratively, I'd say the June meetings are beneficial to us because it helps to kind of frame some of our planning going into the school year.
Yeah, if we could, I think it was June last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
So.
June could be incredibly difficult for us, just three kids with softball, baseball, softball.
Maybe we were later in the year. Did we go, did we go out in August?
I think it was right in August.
Oh, okay, because maybe we tried June.
Yeah, it was in August.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're right, we couldn't get it done early, and we went all the way to right before we started.
Okay.
Well, I'll throw out some possible dates, hit a few months to start with, and then we'll narrow down from there on what may work.
Okay, sounds good. All right, anything else Joe?
Nope.
All right, okay, we'll then move into new business, and we start off with the graduate meeting. Mr. Cecil is here tonight to talk about that.
There is a microphone.
There is a microphone right there, but our podium, we believe is being used for the concert tonight.
Hijacked. Your request. All right, you should have before you a list of about ninety-eight seniors posed to graduate here. Next Wednesday would be seniors' last day, commencement on the twenty-first at two o'clock. And as always, looking for an approval pending that they finish all of their requirements, which we're planning on them doing in the next few days here. Seven days left, so.
Motion to approve the list.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thanks Tom, do we have any further questions or discussions?
Finish strong.
Yep.
It's strong, do you have any idea what did this class size start as? What do they graduate as?
That's a great question, and I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're definitely, they started as a smaller before we have right now.
Ninety-eight's one of the smallest classes.
Yeah, we're not over a hundred.
I think we graduated ninety last year.
What's our graduation rate this year?
Well, right now, a hundred percent, so we're targeting. We're not the next Wednesday.
We'll get the official cohort information in the summer, usually in June, and send that to us.
Just to know with, you know, Laverne, and like, what was the class sizes, first graders versus now, I mean, how many kids do we pick up, open and roll?
It was in the eighties.
Yeah.
Low to mid-eighties, I remember. Eighty-six, I don't know for sure, there was about three or four classes in there that were small.
Good. The last few have been small, and the next three coming up for.
Yeah, then we get real, then we get real big, yeah, sophomore, freshman.
One fifteen to one twenty in those, yeah, each of those grades, so.
Anyway, some of those in first and second as well, the over a hundred ones. We're going to bring a few more Laverne students to that, so. We do, we do vary.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, we do have a motion and a second then, all in favor to approve the graduate list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Graduates approved.
Seniors will be happy.
Yeah.
Robbie will be there to speak and shake hands, will there be anybody else?
We surely could use one more.
Shaking hands.
However, anybody would like to, you just have to maybe let Joe know or Jared know.
Yeah, let me know. We can use another one.
Yep.
Do we have enough spots to stand, spots to sit, so it's not awkward in the middle of the live?
Okay, great.
They might be able to put us up for a soft bed.
In addition, anybody onstage, the faculty will come and sit as they have. So I'll throw that information your way.
Twenty-first, two o'clock?
Twenty-first, two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
So. It'll be great to have one more. All right, approved, as you know before, we had the budget amendment hearing, now we're here to approve the budget amendment.
Yeah, just to reiterate what we talked about in the public hearing, we'll be increasing instruction, one point one million to reflect increased salary costs from our estimate last April. We'll need to increase total support services by five hundred thousand to accommodate additional expenses that we're paying via ESAR, and then also to increase non-instructional programs for the summer expenses that come before June thirtieth.
I make a motion to approve budget amendment.
Thanks Andrea, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thanks Tom, we have a motion and a second, and any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Budget amendment approved. We've got a bunch of fundraisers looking like we're going through next year.
We have a couple fundraisers, you know, our board policy, we got a couple that actually are below the threshold, but I think it's not bad practice to approve these things anyway, and they, they're always low in their estimates in what they may raise as part of the event. The high school vocal department's requesting sale of local business value cards, as they've done in the past, to offset student costs for future music trips. The cards are sold for one month, they estimate a profit around, of around two thousand dollars.
Most of you may be FCs, they're outselling right now, or if you haven't gotten asked, I'm sure you might still. All right, we need a motion then to approve the vocal music fundraiser.
Motion to approve.
We approve them all in one blanket?
We could, let me go through the other two, the baseball fundraiser requesting fundraising cards. Proceeds would be used for equipment, uniforms, team activities, estimated profits five thousand. And then the yearbook fundraiser, we used to sell ads for the yearbook, we don't do that anymore, which has changed their revenue stream, because they don't, they don't need that every year, but there comes time when they need something like now to purchase some additional equipment, and that's what they're going to ask for, some donations from some of those people to do that.
So these fundraiser cards, are they all the same ones?
They aren't, they're different. The baseball one is from a different company, they look different, so then they don't, they don't overlap on the businesses where they go to, so they all kind of have a different value to them, not matter what you give from them. Good question.
All right, we're looking then to approve the vocal music, baseball, and yearbook fundraisers.
Motion to approve the fundraisers.
Okay.
And thanks to all the local businesses that do that.
Yeah, very much, yeah.
Those cost us something, you know, so.
Sure.
Ask a lot of businesses, I think they get hit on quite a bit, but.
Hopefully people use it and return it.
Do's it.
Yep, get back in there.
Tip better at restaurants if they use a five dollar off coupon and.
Exactly. All right, we do have a motion by Brent, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Jay, we have a motion and a second to approve the fundraisers, any further discussion? Hearing done then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of the seven hundred series.
Yes, the first reading, there's no action on this, and it's just a link to the seven hundred series that you can access, and we'll go through in depth in our second reading next month. We are ending up the stages of kind of cleaning up our board policies, there's the next item as well, but then we'll create, Lisa will create an ongoing schedule for this, that's to make sure we are always going back to our policies, updating when we need to update, reviewing when we need to review, and be a little more procedural in that practice. The next item is some updates that do need to take place, and these are the first readings of those, so I'll explain. These are some updates that we get from the Iowa Association of School Boards. The first is in policy two ten point five and meeting notices. That change in policy reflect the legal requirements of posting an agenda on exterior facing door and window so the community can see. That is our current practice, we do that every, every month, but it is now legally needs to be in our policy. Board policy four oh one oh five, regulation one, this is employee records regulation. Changes are to be made to the employee records, that's language overlaps and it's inconsistent with policy seven oh eight, so it creates a consistent between four oh one and seven oh eight. Four oh seven oh two, license contract release, the legal reference was updated in this policy. There's also some additional clarifying language added to provide guidance on charging former employees' costs relating to their replacements. That was a typical practice at one time, a lot of it had to do with the advertisement. Advertisement now, that is required, is electronic with no cost, so policy changes to reflect some of those things.
Is that late resignation?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Five oh one two, non-resident students, language changed and cleaned up to clarify the legal requirements regarding to residency and transfers. This has to do with people transferring from one school to another in district, which in our district can't take place, because there isn't that opportunity. Non-resident students are six oh four six, instruction at a post-secondary educational institution. The Department of Ed has clarified that if a district approves and authorizes enrollment to a course, and the eligible student successfully passes the course, the credit must be awarded. Not sure why that has to be policy before, that certainly was practice in our district, but now needs to be written in board policy six oh four six. Seven oh one two, the transfer of funds, language was updated to match the law allowing the use of, these are just categoricals here, preschool foundation aid, professional development supplement, homeschool assistance, TLC, teacher leadership, that they can all be, we flex to and transfer to a flexible fund and spend throughout their. We have never done that in the district, I don't think we really plan to either. Money that's meant for preschool, we spend on preschool, money that's meant for teacher leadership, we spend on teacher leadership. Seven oh eight, care, maintenance, and disposable disposing of school district records. Record retention timelines have been updated, so our policy needs to reflect that. So those are all first readings of updates that have come from the Iowa Association of School Boards that we'll have the second reading of in June.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or discussion? All right, now we'll move on to personnel, and we have a list of resignations to look over.
Resignations, Brad Sudol from seventh grade boys' basketball, Kristy Roberts from freshman girls' basketball. Don Gatten will be retiring as a bus driver. Dave Penton resigning as a bus driver. Kim Knudsen also retiring as a teacher associate from Bryant Elementary, and Brian Conick resigning from eighth grade girls' basketball.
And all those, none of them are suitable replacements, they're all just.
No, there would be. Brad, Kristine, Brian would all be pending suitable replacements.
I didn't know at the middle school level for sure if that was the case. Okay.
Motion to approve resignations.
Thanks Brent. Thanks Jay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resignations, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resignations approved. New contracts, none in this one?
There are none for the old district.
For the old district, all right. We are at the end of our, the Algonquin Community School District's agenda, we need a motion to adjourn. Thanks Brent.
Second.
Thanks Jay, we are adjourned. We're going to move then right into the newly reorganized Algonquin Community School District agenda, and we need a motion then to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thanks Brent, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks Andrea, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. For consent items for the newly reorganized, we just have the minutes from last meeting, right?
Yeah.
To look over, any comments or questions on those? Hearing done then, all, we need a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion to approve the items.
Thanks Tom.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're now into new business, and we've got to look at the bus bids that keep going up.
Bus bid, Mr. Neill is here to answer any questions if we have any.
It wasn't that long ago, there was ninety-eight thousand.
Yeah, and I got some numbers that I'll share with you. Merrill has put out for bids for a new bus for next year. Do want to point out that last May, we approved a new bus for this year that we don't have yet. So that those are the type of timelines that we're dealing with right now. It is taking a long time to get buses. We sent, we were, we sent bids out to Hoagland Bus in Marshalltown, which is an International Cummings dealer, Truck Center in Omaha, which is a Thomas dealer, and School Bus Sales in Waterloo, which is a Bloomberg dealer. Hoagland did not return. International Cummings does not have a front-engine transit-style bus, Truck Center also did not return a bid. School Bus Sales returned a bid on May second for one hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Last year, a year ago, we approved, it's in the hundred and seventy thousand, it's hundred and seventy-five.
One seventy-five plus the bump up.
And a year before that, we approved two of them at a hundred and forty thousand. So, you know, we're looking at.
Each are total?
No, each.
Okay. So we've went up almost sixty thousand in twenty-four months, is what has happened.
But inflation's only six, seven percent, right?
Our bus purchase, this bus purchase would be a pebble expense, as all of our bus purchases typically are. Certainly, I recommend the approval of the bus, we need a bus. There certainly is at times we want to, these numbers are making that difficult, you know, no doubt about that. So hopefully these level out for us and our timelines get better.
How is our current fleet, I mean, we keeping up with buses and?
I've got some that need to get retired really soon.
Okay.
Maybe start to make a little divestment.
The, will we, does Laverne have any buses that we'll get, or what?
We'll gain the Laverne stuff, yes.
Okay.
I'll sell one of them. We have a two thousand and seven, no, excuse me, a two thousand and four. I'll send that one down the road, keep everything else. My intent is to leave two buses down the Laverne area, I'll bring the rest up here and use them for subs and stuff like that.
Okay.
You know, certainly we can, you know, getting one bus a year, there's worse things. Here's the problem with that being our practice all the time. If we bought one new bus a year for our routes, we would always be driving buses that are seventeen, sixteen, fifteen years old, because we have seventeen routes. So, you know, can we?
I thought it was like two one, two one, I thought that's what.
Well, we would like to, at a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, that's a challenge though, you know, that's part of our issue with that. So, you know, we have to certainly budget and schedule for those things, but these numbers have, has made that very difficult.
So if you haven't got the one from last year's approval or whatever.
That one's due to be finished in Fort Valley at the end of May, I'll have it for the start, I'll have it sometime in July.
So this one's.
They expect this one, if we approve it tonight, I'll sign the order tomorrow, they expect this one not to show up till June or July of next year.
Okay, I figured that.
One year out.
How many miles does one of these run reliably before they start making one?
Well, we've got, I've got a two thousand and eighteen that I bought, and twenty sixteen that's got a hundred and forty thousand miles on it already.
But like, what is the, how long do they go, three hundred thousand?
Well, yes, hopefully without any issues, yes. We got five-year, we got five-year warranty on the engines, emissions, five-year on the transmission, five years on the, on the DEF portion of it, stuff like that, so.
Which some of those things, I'm a long ways from being an expert on any of these, but we're having problems with some of our newer buses with the new DEF.
It's DEF.
Yeah.
And this is, DEF is nothing that's abnormal to anybody. Anybody running large fleets, everybody, everybody has the same issue, it's just not related to school buses or anything like that.
Reliability.
So we are repairing our buses a lot.
What's that? No. I can't delete it either, once it gets here, because it's a government, we're a government entity. The fines would be.
It could be a great thing for automotive class.
Yeah.
All right, any more discussion? Even though we all cringe at the price, it's probably something we.
A motion to approve a new bus, yeah, we need a motion there.
I'll second that.
Thanks Andrea, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go Merrill.
What's that?
Approve the bus.
Thank you.
Do we approve last year's?
Two eighty.
Don't have yet, does that go on last, do we pay for it, or do we pay for it?
No, we pay when we get it, so it'll probably, we hope, it gets paid in FY twenty-three. That affects some of, you know, like amendments, stuff like that, it doesn't affect, pebble dollars don't renew, so it's really just in our personal school budgets on how that goes. But, yeah, that's something that we talked about, you know, the one we approved in for FY twenty-three, we're going to maybe pay for in FY twenty-four, and the one we approved for FY twenty-four may get paid for in FY five. But those don't start over anything, so.
And this will be eighty-four passengers like everything else, which we have to have for our team sizes. I mean, it's just, and they'll have, they'll be, have the same equipment on as the previous ones.
Yeah, we've ordered them all the same for at least the last four years, probably a few years before that.
Yep, a lot longer, yeah, yeah.
And how many routes require a full, a large bus?
None of them.
None of them.
But I can't, I can't.
So do we need the conversation going in the future whether we look at moving towards, you know, or at least running the numbers to see, you know, are teams, other than football and some of the larger ones, can they go to vans? I know we've talked about that, we've purchased a few, and. We've purchased a few, and, you know, whether our routes we run, you know, you don't, I guess it requires more drivers then, and that's a tough part.
Yeah.
But if we can, you have seventeen routes, or?
It'll be sixteen come fall.
Okay.
Maybe, the end cost probably, what?
Sixty-five.
Sixty, and then, and they're not getting, they're not going three-hundred thousand dollars for three-hundred thousand, they're going half that probably. So it's really...
I think we can probably certainly explore the seventy, what is it? If it's not eighty-four, it's a seventy, what passenger?
One of these seventy-seven.
Is there much price difference?
It's, it's one seat, could you go at seventy-seven passenger?
Oh, that's all, that, one row.
Yep, one row is all you're missing.
Yeah.
And for track, your basketball teams, well, varsity, junior varsity going, all your football teams, I can't even haul them in, haul two, and two buses in football. They're full then, so.
Yep.
And at five-hundred-and-fifty square miles, we got a long ways to go. Get kids in here.
We get more money for transportation stuff, right, from the state?
Yeah, there's a transportation equity piece, which basically...
General fund?
Yeah, general fund dollars.
Yeah.
What it, it takes, what's the average that schools spend on transportation? If you spend over that, basically, we get that to balance it out. And we get, we get considerable transportation equity dollars because of the size of our district.
Thank you, Merrill.
Thank you. So is this our, and I know I'm not supposed to talk on this board, so is this our year for the one year that this new one you guys just bought?
Well, we've actually, we've bought one, two years in a row, so we...
Just price-wise.
You know, got off that schedule really because of cost. Two years ago, we would've got two. Am I right there, Merrill?
Yes.
We've bought one the last two years.
No, we bought one the last four years. Kathy's bus would be, would have been single, Kathy's bus was a single. Danelle's bus now is a single that's coming in this year, and this will be a single.
And is that because they're just not coming in on time?
No.
No.
No. It's just expense, yeah.
I guess it'd be three years, but yeah.
Yeah.
Good discussion. Always things to look at as we see these prices increase. Okay, EMC Insurance, we discussed.
Last month, Jason Bradley of PMC Advantage spoke to the board about PMC becoming the school's agent for EMC Insurance. EMC Insurance is our, all of our liability property insurance, not our health insurance for staff, all the other insurances. Different brokers can carry that for us. PMC has asked, you know, that, to come and speak, and that's why Mr. Bradley was here. He discussed their focus on service and communication and the needs of the district. EMC carries the insurance, and rates would be the same, no matter if PMC Advantage was our broker, or if our current broker of Farm and Home was our broker. Our expenses would always be the same, because EMC is going to set those rates.
You know, he stressed service. He'd be here, how often do you hear from our current broker?
Yeah, renewal time, you know, this time of year, they start to talk about renewals, send me some ideas that they're going up. If you guys remember, probably a month or so ago, they let me know that we're looking at at least a ten percent, a ten to twenty percent increase. So they communicate renewal rates. You know, we have vehicle insurance issues, Merrill communicates that to them, and they work with Merrill on those things. That's, that's when I see them.
The point is, they're really, talking a little bit, but what is the, what do they actually do for service? I mean, Jason talked a little bit about just being on-site and seeing things and knowing the facilities, but really, I mean, if you're existing, is there really that much to do? I mean, is there really...
Yeah, you know, I'd probably have to ask those guys about how much they do on their side of it, you know, from the school's side, just making sure we have the coverage that's appropriate for us. We have all of our items covered. You know, I know when we were building the gateway, we had to adjust, you know, some of our coverage, you know, as we acquire and build, build more things. So I think, just making sure the district has the right coverage and the right things covered at the right time.
Like you said, the service, and I think they'd be here to even make suggestions if we saw something that we didn't believe we were appropriately covered for, so, yeah.
Not truly different, I, I mean, you have two local companies, and I'm just kind of like, I don't know if it's really a great policy to go from one local company that hasn't done anything wrong to another one. You know, because what happens in three years, you know, four years? What's too bad is that it sounds like maybe the current carrier's gotten a little comfortable with the contract, and got somebody new that's saying, you know, be a little more involved, so I hate to take away from one local company and give it to another local company, but...
That's what we're here to discuss, so.
My thoughts, I'm sure both, you know, are going to do great, and it's not that Farm and Home's done anything wrong, it's just we haven't had major claims, you know?
Yeah, yep.
So...
Is there something more you need from the current carrier?
You know, I don't know, Tom. You know, that's, Farm and Home's been the carrier that we've had since I've been here. So I know what they've done for us, and certainly, they, we have coverage, we have coverage, we have good coverage. I think EMC provides that for schools, that's the value of having EMC. Farm and Home has been the carrier for a number of years in the district, I do know that. PMC approached us, if you guys remember back a year ago, expressing an interest. I felt it was a little too late to the renewal to make a decision.
I think that was more in May, they came to discuss, or June.
So they approached again this spring, I gave them the opportunity to come and speak to the board at the April meeting, gave Farm and Home the same opportunity, and kind of puts us to where we're at now.
So you provided, you invited Farm and Home?
I did.
Good discussion. I mean, if we're going to make...
I don't think it can go wrong either way, if this, two local companies with people in those businesses that are involved in the town and district, you know?
But, well, as we move forward here, I mean, like I said, I think I, I believe that, maybe we don't know what we're missing if we don't have the service, and people here are discussing things with us on a regular basis, too. So I've been in favor of making, possibly making the switch, but I need a motion from this board then, if we want to look to do that.
And the new contract will start July 1?
Yep, July 1.
So...
I don't know, my personal insurance, you get rebates if you have multiple things. Is there any way to split this without, you know, I mean to...
I don't think there is. I don't think, you can only have one provider as, you know, so, for example, we would have to send a letter immediately, probably tomorrow, to get that switched over. PMC right now cannot even review our file. Only one provider can review your file, or have your file at a time. So I don't think you can, you can split what they, what they provide.
So I wasn't at the last meeting, so if I understand that, then, Joe, correctly, they haven't even been able to analyze the file to say, hey, here's additional suggestions that we would have.
Correct, yeah.
Again, it's going to be the same cost to us regardless, like...
Correct, yes. But coverage-wise, and that's...
And I think Jason mentioned that last week, that he...
Yeah, no, and Jason was upfront, he, he just wanted the opportunity to, to be the agent and to be the point of contact person, and that he felt his point was, you know, he's involved in the district, kids, coaching, you know, he's here almost every day, you know, during the spring, and would, would be here multiple times throughout, because he's in, in the building. And so he felt that he would be able to offer superior service, and didn't say anything negative towards our current carrier, just that he wanted the opportunity to...
Sure. But if I'm understanding, one of the things beyond the services, or well, maybe part of the services, really analyzing the coverage, that that's just not a foregone conclusion?
Yeah, for sure, yeah. Because if he potentially could find some things, we could maybe save money if he was overinsured in areas or something like that.
Exactly, or underinsured.
Or underinsured, yeah, for sure.
How rigor, how rigor, rigorous of a process is that in the renewal phase, Joe? Does today, does Farm and Home come in, in renewal time and kind of walk the grounds, take a look at stuff, or is it more of a...
Not with me, they don't.
Okay.
They, they come in and we talk, we talk rates. You know, when we, we have built construction, stuff like that, they, they call about making sure we have those things covered, and they, they certainly have done that to make sure that we are.
Do we have any staffing levels, the amount of people who will be working with our account from one carrier to the next?
You know, Jason spoke that PMC would have, you know, he had the other person that would be working on the accounts, so they would have multiple people dedicated. I'm not sure how Farm and Home, I work directly with Joe Mueller at Farm and Home on our EMC.
Okay. I mean, we're looking to, to maybe see if there's a possibility of service and possibility of change. We'd need a motion then to approve PMC as our agent, or continue as is.
With the rates the same, we're not dissatisfied, we're saying maybe we'll get more in-person service, maybe.
Maybe, if somebody's on the ground sees a little more, yeah, we don't know.
Dissatisfaction, we have nothing for dissatisfaction, rates are the same.
I, I'm not in favor of switching, of what just Tom, Tom said there, so, I mean, I'm going to, I can motion that we stay the same if you want to get the conversation going, you know, so I mean, I would just, I'll motion that we stay with our current provider, and that says nothing against PMC and what they've done for our school, I just, I just don't like switching, you know, if we're not dissatisfied. So I'm going to, I'll motion that we stay with our current.
How do we do a second to the motion for discussion?
Good. We have a motion and a second then, to continue with Farm and Home. Any further discussion?
Well, I guess my concern would be, well, not necessarily concern, but I think it was, I think it's, maybe says something, though, if PMC's willing to come in and speak to the board and talk, and we offer that up to our current supplier, and I think that kind of speaks a little bit to service, you know?
Fair point.
Yep.
I mean, I just think we vote and just move forward, I just...
One way or the other.
One way or the other, it's, but, you know...
I will make the motion to...
We can't make a motion.
We have to vote, I think we have to vote on this one, and then we can make another...
You can addend a motion, you know, like if you want to.
You have an acting secretary here.
Okay, all right. I'm not trying to cut you out, it's just, I mean, I can retract my vote if you want to, if you want to rephrase it as...
Well, we could...
No, we can vote on it.
We can vote on it, but I think we'd want to do maybe a roll call vote, or, or do we want it, just so we don't say aye and nay?
She can report the ayes and nays.
Yeah, okay, we can just raise, just so there's something then. Okay, right now, the emotion is...
To stay the same.
To stay the same.
Okay.
All right? And if we're going to, any other discussion before we go to vote? All right, hearing none then. All in favor say aye.
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 All, I'm sorry, all opposed?
All in new gym.
Aye.
Yep, all opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go forward here, so we'll, based on that result, we'll switch.
We need a motion then to move to...
There you go. So motion, my motion fails.
Yes, your motion fails.
All right.
And I'll make the motion to switch the agent of record to PMC.
Okay, we have a motion to switch the agent of record to PMC. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? All right, we'll vote then. All in favor of switching the agent of record to PMC, say aye.
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 All opposed? All, anybody abstaining? All right, just wanted to make sure we all voted then. So the motion passed to switch the agent of record to EMC, from EMC Insurance to Pro Advantage. Okay, good, we're moving on from that one then. North Central Consortium...
That's exciting stuff.
I know.
It's like the first time we've had a disagreement.
Yeah, it's okay. We all, we can all have a good discussion.
We were just testing Janie.
Yeah, she's going, thank you.
But I think it speaks to, I mean, we appreciate local business, right, and that's not an easy decision, I think.
Yeah, sure. All right, North Central Consortium agreement.
The North Central Consortium School serves students in grades three through twelve, mostly with significant behavior needs, that can be both student on an individual educational plan, an IP, or general ed students. Manson North Webster is the flow-through agent, so we, we upfront cost, so our cost for a school district our size, which I think is twelve-hundred to fifteen-hundred, is fifty-five thousand dollars upfront, and then also five thousand dollars for facilities. Of that fifty-five thousand, if you don't use it, you get it all, you get it all back. We've spent over that a number of years in a row, and then you just get billed for whatever you're...
I'd say we do get billed then, okay.
Yep. The PEPAL, that, that money goes towards expense, no matter what, there's no refund with the PEPAL facilities cost. The upfront cost, I would say, is not a concern, because we do spend more than that every year, so we're paying it ahead of the time rather than, than later. So I would recommend the agreement, again, with the North Central Consortium School for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Make the motion to approve the agreement.
I'll second.
Thanks, Andrea, thanks, Jay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just, I've been down to the North Central Consortium a couple times, and they've got wonderful teachers down there, and associates, and, I mean, they, they've got their ducks in a row, and they, they do a great job.
That's nice to hear.
Their, their goal is to get those kids transitioned back to their, maybe their district, so I mean...
Sure.
They have success and some non-success, but that's, you know, it's, they do a great job.
Certainly is, really helps us support our kids. What they do helps us support our kids, there's no doubt about it, and whether we have five kids there, or one, or whatever's in between, they certainly are beneficial to our students.
Wish it was a little closer, but, you know, I couldn't do about that, so.
I was there the other day, there were a bunch there from Storm Lake.
It's further...
There's, there's some that are further away than we are.
We are, okay. All right, we do have a motion and a second. Thank you for the good discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Vista Software Agreement.
The Vista, the Vista Financial Management Software, was called Grantwood at one time. That's what we use in the district. The license fee is a per pupil amount. That per pupil amount is based on your certified number. Keep in mind, our certified number goes up because we take, so it does go up a couple thousand for us this year. So the software renewal is seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty, and I do recommend the Vista contract renewal.
Make a motion to approve the Vista Software Agreement. Thanks, Todd. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Brett, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And that does payroll and what, leaves, does that do leaves and all that stuff, or is that that different?
We use Time Clock Cluster leaves now, but we did do all of that, but every, every, from purchase orders to, you know, all of our financials are in the business system.
All right, any further questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion for Vista software agreement approved.
I'm gonna step off because my daughter is up playing with Ben, so...
Please do. We, we don't want the school board to ever interfere with seeing something like that, so good luck. Thanks, Brent.
See you, Brent.
Food service management companies.
We received all the proposals from the food service management companies. There were three companies that submitted. We had a committee that consisted of eight people. Andrea represented the board. I was on that, that committee. Lisa Chapman was this manager with another requirement. Mrs. Nelson, who's here with us tonight, was also on that. We had some administrators, we had some food service staff, we had some, some teachers. So we had a great representation. Each person then scores the proposals individually, which is as required through the process by the Department of Ed. Tahoe Food Service had the highest scoring proposal. They submitted a proposal for $2.41 per reimbursable meal. Whoever has the lowest reimbursable expense gets the highest number for cost on the rubric. But there are other factors as well. So that, that's how Tahoe scored the highest. All of our current food service staff in this agreement would have the option to continue to work for the Algonquin Community Schools for our wages and receive our benefits and, as well as the IPR's retirement if they, if they choose. Tahoe was onsite last Thursday, Wednesday, last Wednesday, to speak with our food service department to answer any questions that they may have about their company, about what the transition would look like, about all of our food service employees' future, and continuing to work. And I think that was a valuable conversation. That, that helped our, our people a lot on where they're, emotionally where they're feeling, because this is a change. It's a big change, and that, that brought a lot of concern. All food service employees that are hired from this point on would be hired, when I say this point on, I would mean July 1st on, would be hired by Tahoe Food Service. All three proposals were great. They, they do a nice job in selling their, their service to, to schools. And I, I recommend accepting Tahoe with the highest scoring proposal for our food service management company for the 23, 24 school year.
And is it a contract that's looked at every year?
It is, it is looked at every year. It's a year-to-year contract, but we don't have to put out for bid again for five years.
Okay.
So we, we have the option of having Tahoe, if approved, for five years, although it is, it's renewed annually.
Approximately how much more do you think this costs the district?
It's a really good question, Jay. We, in our proposal, it is a break-even contract. So we're guaranteed to break even. So if our expenses exceed this year's expenses, for example, Tahoe reimburses the district that amount. So that's, that's built into our, our, our policies to break even.
Just the first year?
Well, no, because that's what our, our RFP required break even.
Where is this company out of?
They are out of Minnesota. She drove two hours to come and see us last year. They also have some local districts, such as Fort Dodge, Garner Hayfield. So they have some, they're regional people right here. They certainly were the most, most regional to us in comparison to the other companies who, who bid, for sure.
You were a part of this process?
I was, I think.
What did you think?
So, some of the proposals were 800 pages, if that makes, I mean, they're like...
Very extensive.
Yes. And, yeah, I thought their proposal, myself personally, I liked the best. I liked that they're more low. Like, one of the groups was out of...
Arizona?
Arizona, yeah.
And Illinois, and then this one out of Minnesota.
I thought kind of what we're looking for in terms of being able to diet these kids with lunch, they, they could get that done, so.
So then will we do the purchasing, or they do all that?
They do that.
Okay.
Yep, all, all the purchasing, create the menu. They'll come in, first thing they'll do is come in and they'll, they'll start to train our staff in August. First thing they'll do is advertise to hire, to try to fill, fill the staffing, which will be a challenge. It's been a challenge for us, it'll continue to be a challenge for them. Then they'll come in and they'll train our staff. They'll train our staff on safety, well, you know, which, which we do safety training now. They'll train our staff on production. They, they would be here in the next two weeks to look at our, our lines, our points of sale, some of those types of things, and start to analyze that for what that would look like for next year. So when they come here in August, they can start to put that plan in place.
So then, will it, I think I know the answer, but we'll still have lunch accounts through the school?
Yeah.
We won't be through Tahoe or whatever.
No, no. Basically, you know, they, they do the, the purchasing, and they invoice us to be reimbursed at that reversible amount for lunch, and that, that's what we, we pay them. All the other dollars are coming to us.
Or how, how different are these rates, Joe? Will these, will our rates to the, to the students or families change based on this?
No. Our rates will stay the same. Those rates that you're looking at there are their reimbursable rates, not necessarily what we're charging. Joe, am I saying that the right way? Yep. So those don't...
That's what they invoice us.
That's what they invoice us for. Our rates, our, we are not planning our, our rates on, you know, changing for next year. That was part of what we gave them in the proposal, is we are not anticipating an increase in those. There could be in the future, but that's based upon food crisis, as well as what the federal reimbursement rate is. That could force us, typically that is what forces us to increase our rates.
Because what is our high...
Yep, yep.
What's our current high school lunch cost?
For a high school.
For a high school kid?
Uh, $2.80.
$2.80.
$2.80, okay.
So we'll approve rates in, you know, July, like we, we typically do, and we, we didn't increase those last year. Actually, I haven't increased them for two years and really aren't, aren't planning to for next year. Unless, when the federal rates come back and it requires us to, which we don't have control over when that happens.
Sure, minimal.
Yeah, right.
Yep. Okay, any further discussion? Sounds like we've done our homework, and hopefully we'll make a nice, a nice transition for our food service. So, need a motion then to approve Tahoe as our food service management company. So moved. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Memorabilia committee, if I said that right.
Yeah, the general purpose of this committee would be to discuss, this would be a committee we're putting in place in, in Laverne, to discuss, you know, what is CWL memorabilia? What do they do with the memorabilia? What are the items they want to keep? And then that committee would make the recommendation to you guys at the August, August board meeting. So the committee would be Barb Legler, Kevin McPhee, Carter Nath, and Lynda Merkel to be on this committee, or Linda Merkel. These are people that Mr. Heeser has talked to, and they, they have an interest in starting this work and making the recommendation to the board in August.
Seems like a smart thing for them.
What does that, I mean, what does that look like? And do we have some, do we do something similar with Ta-taka?
I'm not sure what we did with Ta-taka. CWL has went through some of these processes before. So, you know, they have, they have trophies, you know, they have graduate composites, you know, all those types of things. Where do they go? What do they do with them? And they certainly have some ideas and some plans. Do they go to the community center, you know, and things like that? And then they'll, they'll have those discussions. They'll bring a recommendation to us in August on what to do with that memorabilia and where it should go. And, you know, if the community center, center doesn't want it, or the community center ever closes, then maybe it comes to Algonquin Schools, for example. So that, they'll, it'll be an inclusive, basically, decisions from some of the people there on what they do with that, those items moving forward.
I'll make the motion to set up the memorabilia committee and thank them for doing that.
Yeah, very much so.
Do we have a second?
No second, the motion?
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second to approve the memorabilia committee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We've got some open enrollments.
We have four open enrollment applications for next year. All four of these applicants have met all requirements.
Make the motion to approve open enrollments.
Second.
Thank you, Andrea. Thanks, Jay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we have a few contracts to approve.
Three contracts for next school year. Dave Pope, bus driver. Roxanne Suter, middle school teacher associate. And Brian Connick for freshman girls' basketball.
What about the, about the high school choir, do we approve?
Uh, it, it's not a new contract.
Okay.
It's really a transfer, so it doesn't, it doesn't show up here. But Tahoe Colmer will be our high school vocal music teacher.
Okay.
Mr. Cecil and his, his group have went through that process, and feel excited for Mr. HU to move, move over to high school for next year.
Makes sense then. All right, we need a motion to approve the contract. So moved. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Well, we're at the end of our agenda. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for all the discussions tonight and getting through both agendas. And also want to remind everybody it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and not that we just want to appreciate them during the week, because we know they, they do work throughout many years and many years. And so, thank you for all you do, and you, I'm sure you'll continue to do, so. All right.
When is that, Rodney?
That's this week.
This week, okay.
It's the Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yep.
So if you get a chance to be in your buildings that you adopted, it'd be a great time to do that, too, to walk around and thank everybody and for all their service this year. So, all right, we just need a motion for adjournment then.
So moved.
All right, we have a second. Thanks, Jay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.